Thursday, February 11th, 7:00 PM. It's a meeting of the Belbruck-Creek Board of Education. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mrs. Dorn?
Here.
Mrs. Long?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Stein, would you please do the treasuries report?
We've got a motion to approve the minutes from the meetings of January 14th and 23rd.
Mrs. Long? Oh, Mrs. Dorn, sorry. The voice is the same, but I'll have to be careful. And Mrs. Sloughman. Please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We've got a motion to approve the treasuries report for the month of January 2021 as included with the agenda.
Mrs. Long? And Mrs. Dorn?
A couple of things I want to say. One, we did, we have been mentioning in the past several meetings that we were cut $657,000 by the state of Ohio last fiscal year, and then that funding level remained the same this fiscal year, which to me was another $657,000 cut. We finally got some good news. This week, we received about $436,000 from the state to try to alleviate some of those cuts that they had made, so netted out to about $888,000 that we've been cut that we weren't expecting as of May 1st, 2020, but that's better than 1.3 million.
And less of a sting.
Right, so I wanted to mention that. If we look real quickly at the first blue page in your packet, you can see on that page at the bottom that 58% of the fiscal year had elapsed as of January 31st, and so the percentages there in that right column, some of those are important. The second row, state foundation revenue, state, or regular state funding, shows that we are 1% higher than that. 59% of our budget has been, has arrived, so that's good, a little bit more than we thought we were going to get. And the other two that are really important are under expenditures. The retirement benefits is right on the button at 58%, and salaries for employees are at 55%, but that is a little understated because we have a three-pay month coming up, since it's paid biweekly, so that will get closer to 58% then, maybe right at that amount. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that if you look at the pie charts under expenditures, we are now, and this changes month to month, so I don't know how much you really read into this, but we always say we don't want to be over 80% of our budget for salaries and wages, well, we're at 80% now. And I think this year, that's because we haven't spent a whole lot of anything, any of the, you know, equipment, supplies, and purchase services, we haven't made a lot of the optional purchases. And there are also quite a few of those that can be made with grants that we've got through the Corona situation, so it's not that the salaries have gone up, it's just that the rest of the pie has gone down, so which increases that percentage. That's really all I've got, unless there's something else I have to report that someone has a question about.
Any questions from the board? All right, please call the roll.
Okay, Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, motion passes.
Okay, and the last one I have, we've got a motion to approve in advance, which is a loan in the amount of $13,656.08 from the general fund entitled 6B, federal grant, while the grant is in the red, to leave the Navy balance until the reimbursement arrives from the federal government.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Backing.
Mrs. Dorn? And as a reminder for folks not familiar is that this, this fund can't be in the red at the end of the month, so we have to give it in advance, and then the federal grant comes in later.
Right, they require us to spend it or they will send the money. They have to prove we spent the money, then they reimburse us towards it. Didn't used to be that way.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Was there any correspondence that people received that they wanted to share with the board in public? All right, going on to reports to the, to the board, we have the Belbruck Middle School Flight Class for St. Pierre. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Well, thank you for inviting me. So I just put together some brief slides because it had some good pictures of different activities we've done in the eighth grade flight class. The class is new this year and it is a STEM-type class, so all the activities that we do follow the engineering design process and they're very young fun, so. Oh, thank you. Oh, gosh, you're running it, you're good. So we started out learning just about the history of aviation to get some good background milestones in human flight, and we did a timeline, so there are just all the students posted of the, you know, important events throughout the years of aviation. And then after that, we did our first hands-on activity, which was building hot air balloons. So they each built their own tissue paper hot air balloon, and we tested it on an indoor hot air machine, and that was provided to us from Air Camp. And then after that, they built the basket, and we put an egg in there and dropped it, and the egg was to test for stability of the basket. So for that one, here's some examples of their hot air balloons that they built, and they kind of us outside testing them out. And then since we followed the engineering design process, if it didn't work, then they had the opportunity to redesign and retest. So they had some really creative designs and did a good job with that activity. And then after we did hot air balloons, kind of continuing through the activities, we learned about the Wright Brothers, and we did our research assignment through the Smithsonian website to learn some good real-world connections with Dayton and the Wright Brothers and their historical events. And then we built what's called a Wright bat, it's a flying gadget similar to what they had when they were boys. So we built those and we flew those flying gadgets, and so some are pictured that they flew, it's hard to get those in action. And then we also watched a Wright Brothers video, so kind of connecting it more to aviation that's important in the Dayton area. And then after that, we learned about the physics of flight. So physics of flight, we learned about different parts of the airplane, and to put that into an activity, we each built a Model F-15 plane, and then we labeled the parts of the airplane on there, learned about the airplane functions, so how all the different parts actually function, and then we practiced flying those, and they got awards for the ones that traveled the furthest distance and everything. So there were some of their example models, and then here's kind of somewhere we tried to get some action shots of them throwing them. So that's where we kind of tested them out, so they have the same starting line, and then we just measured the distance to see how far they went. And then after we did planes, we got to do a fun activity of boomerangs. So they each got just a generic kind of plastic boomerang shape that was built out of balsa wood, and then they learned about tapering it, so to make an airfoil on it, and after they were able to kind of start shaping it, tapering the wood to create that trailing edge for the airfoil, then they painted it, and we also likewise took those outside to test. The goal was for the boomerangs to be able to actually come back to them, so most were successful with that, but that's what we were actually trying to do is to learn how to throw it as well as how to design it for it to be able to come back to you full circle. And then there was also gliders in there, too. We did a glider activity, so they were given the balsa wood body of the glider, and then they built the rest of the parts, and they tested out to see how well theirs was able to fly. And then with the assistance of Mr. Price, we had a guest speaker who was a pilot, and Finn actually flew his helicopter, this is the back of the field here at Belbruck Middle School, so he flew his helicopter out to the field, and we had first and second trimester flight classes there, so they were all able to see it, but he talked to them all about, you know, what it takes to become a pilot, how helicopters actually work. After he, you know, gave them the introduction about helicopters, we answered questions, they also asked him to perform some cool tricks. So he was able to fly forward, backward, in circles, all of that for them. So it was a fun day, and then in addition to having, of course, a helicopter at school, which that's pretty hard to talk, but then we did in the classroom kind of a small-scale helicopter activity, it was called Design a Helicopter for Mars, and they created a miniature paper helicopter, and then they had to learn about Mars and the gravity on it and the atmosphere, and kind of modify it to where it would be best suited for a landing on Mars surface versus a landing on Earth's surface. And we were talking about recent events that are coming up in February with landings on Mars. And then where we're kind of getting to at this point is we are learning about careers in aviation, and for careers in aviation, they're also learning about influential people in the field of flight. So we did a couple of different things here. They did a project where they could pick to do the project on any career that interested them in the field of aviation, from, you know, working with drones in the military to being a flight attendant. And then they also learned about influential people, so Amelia Earhart and even Elon Musk, anyone that has to do a flight. So that was cool, and they presented their project, so now it's hard to see, but that's kind of them presenting some cool slides. And then they also could build hands-on models, so there's Sam in that picture, but he built a really cool model plane, kind of applied what we've been learning throughout their trimester in his presentation with that. And that's where we have virtual guest speakers. So for first trimester, we had Mr. Price, and each trimester we're having a different guest speaker that actually works in a field that is related to aviation, so they can get a real-world experience. And of course, they share COVID-style, we're doing it all virtually, so our Google me class guest speaker. And then the last slide that's on here is just what we're actually working on this week in between snow days, but they're making winglets and they're testing them out in a wind tunnel. And they will have two different designs of the airfoils, one's going to have the winglet some on well, and then they're going to see how effective their designs are when they test them out in the wind tunnel. So that's one that's kind of in progress this week, and we're using wind tunnels from the Air Camp as well. That's kind of all the fun things we're doing in flight class, just a lot of hands-on activities, anything that has to do with flight and aviation, and then we just follow the engineering design process for activities. So it's been a lot of fun, and that's everything we put in the trimester.
Wow, it's a lot to fit in there.
Thank you.
Thank you too, Mr. Price, for participating in that.
Jennifer? Did you plan this whole course to yourself?
Oh, with collaboration with Kim Lord. So Kim Lord and I kind of co-planned it together. She's our STEM teacher here at the middle school, but right now she's working with DOA, so she's with the online students, but we co-planned it together.
Nice.
How much time did you spend planning all this?
That's a good question. We started in the summer, and then we've kind of been adding to it throughout the school year as we find cool activities, fun ones added. The winglets and the wind tunnels, for example, just added on recently, so that's our newest one. But just any time that we find something that we think would be fun for the students and relates to flight, we just add it on. So from the summer till now, I guess?
Keep writing it.
Jenna's actually being quite modest.
Sure.
Jenna and I came to her in the middle of the summer and said, hey, we kind of changed your round, we're going to do this DOA thing, and Mrs. Lord is going to be the science teacher for the online kids, and so we determined someone to step in. She helped Brian, got Ryan Paul, what I did, just an example of one of our five professionals that we have here.
Have you written that all down as a curriculum?
Yes, we do have a Google Doc with everything in order from beginning to end of the trimester, all the activities.
Oh, thank you so much, and I would love to see that curriculum sometime.
Definitely, yeah, I can share that doc with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If not this year, based on the COVID situation, but if it's later this year or next year, if I assume this program will be in effect next year too as well, correct?
Hopefully, I would be happy with that.
If, if, if you see a wakeboard or a field trip up to the museum, you know, then I could kind of go along, and I've got kind of a little insight into some of the stuff that's out there, so I'd be happy to, you know, tag along and kind of pull some things out if you want to do that.
Yes, that would be wonderful. Or talk a lot about Young Eagles.
Yeah, Young Eagles out at, yeah, that's a good one. Young Eagles out of Green County, which family, can you tell you about that at the time?
Yeah, Finn talked to the classes about the Young Eagles option.
Yeah, family along with others out of Green County, they allow young people under the age of 18, I believe, that have interest in flight, to get a free flight. So whether it's in a helicopter, which is really a remarkable opportunity, or big-swing aircraft or whatnot, so it's obviously been set back with the COVID situation, but Green County is very active with that, so maybe later this year, just make your students aware of it, and then take them to one of that opportunities, at least ahead of time register, you know, and request, you know, opportunity to have an experience of it.
Perfect, thank you. This is an elective for eighth graders only? It is. So how many students like signed up, or did you turn kids away? Did you have a lot of interest? So it's actually part of our elective rotation for eighth graders, so just almost every eighth grader gets the opportunity to take these classes, so the way we do our rotation is combined with bands and choir, and so if, you know, maybe that's not of interest, we offer these kind of additional options for students, so. Very excited about that.
Well, again, thank you very much, and you know, we talked about how much time you might have spent on that. Teachers are probably wise not to identify to themselves how much time I've spent on getting something ready when you want it to be just right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, going on to Belbruck Middle School art. Ali Geis, thank you for coming too.
I have to say, I have notes, so I don't talk forever. We don't have a curfew anymore.
Oh, that's right, curfew free?
We're curfew free.
Alright.
Well, again, thank you for Dr. Cozett, Jeppe Dunne for allowing me to share my thoughts on the arts, education, and my alma mater, Belbruck-Creek School. This is my 10th year teaching, started in the district, and it would be an understatement to say this has been a year like no other. However, despite this circumstance, seven, three students were able to find a bit of novelty and solace in our class. They rely on this class for their social, emotional learning, self-impression, and a safe place to succeed, a lively mistake. I do have a few moments from our class to share with you. I think I made it, I think I made it outside. I have some hard to say here back out of the point to share processes of making art. So in class, students read, write, and create, and discuss by using the elements of school. This year, students have 12 weeks to explore a variety of mediums and techniques demonstrated. Projects will integrate history, math, and science, as well as develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, a strong focus on student development. Projects include, and not limited to, we can observe visual drawing, color theory, watercolor, acrylic painting, ceramics, collage and mixed media, and digital art. My students are personally my favorite part of the class. I love to assist them try that conscious discovering that they can make something in the concepts they develop in just one trimester. I'm actually very excited, I have two of my students here, and they want to share something as well. I have Caroline, please, to hear them.
Um, so my students, this is the natural theme of others that he, and then here's my teachers, and I love our class because it's great to be creative and expressive while also building materials. So here are my students, and I also go into our class to introduce some of the new students that I live with, our group helps to promote.
I would like to add that visual arts is much more than a final product, learning takes place in the process. So our process actually parallels that of the engineering process, and my students also work through and develop the student development line, which are observe, envision, express, develop craft, engage, and resist, and reflect. Notice how these terms are exclusive to art. Art is actually naturally exclusive. While the curriculum is based on visual arts standards, our education has the unique ability to weave interdisciplinary concepts, that fosters the ability to make broad connections within their own education, and also application to the real world. Art provides my students and me to generate creative solutions and express concepts I need. Careers in the 21st century will be me and creative and innovative thinkers, communicating, collaborating across cultures, and the outreach has started right here in our community. The art program there at the middle school has three new partnerships with the Park District, Pristine Night, Belbruck Sugar Maple Festival, and currently developing a collaboration with the Belbruck City Council. Even a modest investment in visual arts education can yield a powerful and lasting impact on the community and future generations. Simply part of art is essential, and I'm really honored I was able to advocate tonight, and thank you for your innovative attention.
Thanks. Can you tell us a little bit more about the pictures on display in the back?
Because these are all created from the, we're also a trimester class, so this is created from both trimesters. I do have to do STEM limitations because of shared materials, but these are students that have twice now, have been sixth grade, so we're just naming on their skills. So we have some where it's drawing from observation, complete where it's, they're beginning of full of paper, so they fold the paper first, and then they're looking at it. All these pictures are flat, and I love being a lesson planner, so when I show them their examples, they can't believe I can do it, and then they give it. And then from there, we're able to move it toward detailed things, for listening, and adding in other mediums, actually, it's more competent because it's changing with pencil. They think that art is just about being able to interpret life, and I'm trying to teach them it's way more than that, so that they explore events of digital media, different types of mediums, and we have some things over there. So this is all from both first trimester.
All right, thank you very much. Do you have a question?
They are.
All right, thank you.
Just want to say thank you to St. Pierre and Mr. Geis, both do a fantastic job dedicated to our students, the school district, and just doing some top-notch stuff, so really appreciate that and thank you. To students that came in, great work, and thank you for joining us.
All right, next is open communication, I'll go check to see if there's anybody signing. Or Audra, thank you very much, Mrs. Dorn. empty? Okay. All right, going on then to the superintendent's report, Dr. Cozett.
Thank you. Number seven, new business, certified, terminated, I'm sorry, licensed employment resignation leave absence and supplemental duty. Number one, recommended acceptance of supplemental duty resignation from Andrew Hartley as girl's assistant across faculty unit.
You have a motion, please? Mrs. Long? Mrs. Dorn? Any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommended approval of following supplemental duty contracts for 2021 school year, Caleb Ragaman, Jason Kreider, Amy Dulus, Jeff Beckley, Kyle Ferguson, Zachary Guest, Kim Lord, and Michael Mullins.
We have a motion? Mrs. Dorn? Mrs. Sloughman? Any questions or comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number three, supplemental duty other, we resolved the official recruiting for education has offered these supplemental duty positions via posting licensed employees in the school district. The board either had no qualified licensed employee applicants or no employees comply apply before these positions were offered to non-licensed persons. The following non-licensed persons have met qualifications for the board meeting or posting of supplemental duty positions as stated below. Number four, recommend approval of following supplemental duty contracts for the 2021 school year, Trevor Atkins, Richard Anderson, and Good Pastor, Alan Johnson, Belarus Laborists, Todd Raker, and Jonathan Ventures.
Ready to, we have a motion?
Salute.
Mrs. Long?
Backing.
Mrs. Dorn? Any question or comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five, recommend approval of following supplemental duty volunteers for 2021 school year, Karen Havlin, Mrs. Boytens.
We have a motion? Mrs. Dorn? Mrs. Sloughman? Questions or comments? Right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes.
Recommend approval of following substitute teachers for the second semester of the 2021 school year, Thomas Hensley, Arden Kato, Rebecca Kenny, Anthony Locan, Michael Morgan, Anna Schaefer, and Emily Will.
We have a motion? Mrs. Long? Mrs. Sloughman?
Trying to build out that substitute teacher board.
Yes. And it's good to see that, that's right.
I was on a train last week before Wind O'Neely, and they mentioned that they were relaxing some of the requirements for substitutes in COVID, is that?
Yeah, they did, so they, they said non-bachelor degree folks could be substitute teachers, but that's just for the remainder of this school year.
I'm also trying to see if this was a result of that or.
No.
Farly needed.
Uh huh, agree. Any other questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Be support staff in form resignation leave absence, recommend approval of following substitute support staff for the second semester of 2021 school year, Kimberly Flynn, Marvin Muller, and Matthew Truman.
Do we have a motion? Mrs. Dorn?
Backing.
And Mrs. Long?
And Mr. Wai, our new transportation supervisor results. And, um, Mr. Wilhite, our new transportation supervisor is out. He was just here trying to get some bus drivers, so three, three folks are in training here, so hopefully we'll continue to build up that substitute.
Very good, and it's been an exciting couple of weeks with transportation as far as the weather is concerned.
You can use the word exciting, okay. Early?
Early, early indeed. Any other questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, recommending sentence of resignation for the purpose of full Ohio S E R S retirement from Secretary Teresa Rabinik effective end of day June 30th, 2021.
We have a motion?
Dismissed.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Second.
Mrs. Long?
And she has spent 25 years in school district at Sugar Creek Elementary and UCI.
Yeah, we'll be seeing her go, or be retired. Happy for her, sad for us.
Yes.
Yeah, she's a delight. Any other questions or comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Going on to items of information and comments, board representative, excuse me, board representative as the OSBA Legislative Liaison. Anybody who has been thinking about it decide to opt for serving in that way? All right, I'll go ahead and take that one then. Does that mean, does that mean a vote from them?
We've always voted to approve the whole, the whole bunch, so I suppose maybe we shouldn't do that one too.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve, uh, Dave Trever as the board representative for the Legislative Liaison?
Second.
Mrs. Dorn? And Mr. Price?
Very quick.
That's right. All right, all right. Any discussion?
No.
All right, Carol, please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
I will abstain.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just a quick thing about vaccinations, so we have, probably it's hard to get a solid number on vaccinations for the school district of First Ghost for February 18th, which is next Thursday. We have about 75% of our staff that is getting vaccinations, so that includes our support staff, teachers, but also our coaches, subs, substitute teachers, substitute support staff, so it's hard to get an exact number on the number of subs and support staff, so and coaches, so about 75% of our folks are getting vaccination. So that's a pretty high, pretty high solid number there.
And that's going to be in combination with Beaver Creek, Greenview, and the Green County ESC.
Yep.
All at Beaver Creek High School.
Yep. February 18th, definitely. Everybody's looking forward to that.
I've been involved with, you know, the 40 different schools that have been, been getting their, their information loaded in, prepared for their, their vaccines, so it's glad to see that ours came through. All right. All right, for executive session, for the purpose of considering employment and compensation of the licensed public employee per revised code 121.22 paragraph G1, do we have a motion?
Dismissed.
Mrs. Long?
Second.
Mrs. Dorn? I think it's called.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Motion passes, we're going into executive session at 7:35.
8:37, I'll make a note of that, Mr. Linding. Are there any other topics of just general discussion that anyone would like to talk about?
Yeah, so parents who have students in BOA that have returned to school are very concerned about them being behind. And Cindy Hessler, Hasler, and Chip Will, they want them commended for giving up all this free time to help kids catch up, especially in chemistry and math, because the BOA wasn't even close to what they needed to accomplish.
Oh, okay.
So they're very, very behind. And a suggestion was having an ACT/SAT review class for these kids, because they'll be taking it shortly.
Some schools dropped the requirement for this admission, I have heard.
We're taking it like two weeks.
Taking the test or three weeks.
ACT.
Yes, it's gonna be a disaster.
End of the month here.
I have to think that's gonna be a disaster at every school district, though. Not that that's a good excuse, but I mean, there are some school districts that have been totally virtual this entire time. Is that even possible?
Yeah.
I agree with that, that this is our district, and these parents don't.
But I mean, if they could talk to their counselor.
Oh, gosh, Doug. I'm not gonna ask them if they talk to their counselor.
Well, but I mean, they would have the information. I thought they were doing some review sessions. So the counselors or the principals would know about those review sessions. We normally have...
Why don't you write a letter and send it to everybody about that?
About what?
Ask your counselor or whatever you think would be helpful.
There are review sessions.
Give them the information.
For those BOA kids that came back?
Or just generally...
Have they been doing SAT/ACT prep?
ACT.
Is there no SAT? Is it not exist anymore?
Well, so the state purchases an ACT test for every junior. So we give it back. So that's during the school day. So anybody's allowed to take the ACT or SAT on their own time on Saturday or whatever. But we do one in-house. And so in the past, we have brought somebody in to do ACT review with our students. But this year, I can't remember, we refined it or did something a little different because of COVID, because they would come all in the cafeteria and do all that. So I don't know if there was some type of online review or what. So...
That would be a good thing.
So, I mean, can the BOA, so the BOA parents can't talk to the counselors and say, what can they, what can I do to help ACT? Can that information be passed on to them? Or saying, for talking to all the BOA students that return that are juniors, to say, go talk to your counselor about ACT prep? Again, I don't want to unnecessarily give people information and they don't really care about it.
And how many can that populate to be the number of juniors that return, which I can't imagine there are?
I would guess 10 or 15 kids. I have no idea.
Those kids should be discounted, but I would think it wouldn't be difficult just to reach out to those five or 10 families and say, this is what's been done. Maybe did they already perhaps miss a vote in that? It's been going on for a while, I don't know.
Yeah, I can do that. Why don't I do that? So I'm gonna reach out to, or have Dave or counselors reach out to the BOA juniors that return face to face and talk about ACT.
But the ones that didn't return, they got the same issue, right?
I don't know if they're coming in to test. Let me talk to Dave about that, too. Let me talk to him about how they're doing juniors. That's coming up the 28th, the 23rd of this month. Because we have to, as a district, there's a couple of dates we have to pick for ACT.
Whoa.
Now, they can take ACT whenever they want to take it. This is just, this is just the one that the state pays.
They can take it 10 times, like most of them do.
Well, and I think...
Not a million years.
You were mentioning that they were behind in things like chemistry and math. Okay, math, I mean, math and chemistry, I mean, some of that stuff isn't, like, if I remember right, in a minute. You don't test like hardcore.
It's not quantitative, it's science, but math is, yeah.
I'll talk with them. Right, it's probably not, well, with all the BOA juniors, or all the, all the juniors, how they're dealing with BOA currents and BOA that return face to face. Okay. I can do that.
All right. Any other general discussion questions or topics that folks want to talk about?
No.
All right, do we have a motion for a tournament?
Sound move.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Second.
Mrs. Long?
8:43.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. All right, call the rule, Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yeah.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
We are adjourned at 8:40.